Meeting to order, may we have roll call, please?
Boyd.
Here.
Goldbeck. Pelagian. Hatwick.
Here.
McNary.
Here.
Roper.
Yeah.
Simmons.
Here.
Thank you, on to item number two. Meeting minutes, any changes or corrections to the meeting minutes? If not, entertain a motion.
I had none, I'd like to motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Bits are approved. Nothing on, oh, was, uh, any changes to the agenda?
No changes.
I move we approve the agenda.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Agenda is approved, no items on the consent calendar, no continued matters. Onto commission item A, please.
The Senator Ray W. and Marie Hayes home located at sixteen oh eight slash sixteen sixteen South Minnewawa Avenue is being nominated to the local register of historic resources by the property owners and is supported by State of California survey forms prepared by Carana Hattersley Drayton. The property is located near the major intersection of Butler and Minnewawa avenues. Theodore Carney supervised the planting of the one hundred twenty year old palm trees that line these segments of the avenues, which are also designated as Fresno County landmarks. The Senator Ray W. and Marie Hayes home was constructed in nineteen thirty seven as a single family home slash ranch complex in the Sunnyside neighborhood that exhibits a variety of architectural styles such as Craftsman Colonial Revival and Tudor Revival. When the property was originally purchased by Senator Hayes and his wife Marie, it consisted of forty-four acres. Senator Hayes lived in this home for the last thirty-five years of his life and Marie for the last fifty-six of hers. In addition to change in land use over time, alterations to the residence have taken place such as the enclosure of the back porch beneath the sleeping porch in the late nineteen nineties and the construction of the pool and cabanas circa nineteen ninety-eight. However, these alterations do not diminish the integrity of the property. The Senator Ray W. and Marie Hayes home located at sixteen oh eight slash sixteen sixteen South Minnewawa Avenue is eligible for the local register of historic resources because it is greater than fifty years of age having been constructed in nineteen thirty-seven. It possesses the seven aspects of integrity, location, design, setting, materials, workmanship, feeling, and association, and therefore retains integrity. It meets local register criteria one, two, and three as it is an early, important suburban ranch property in development of the Sunnyside neighborhood, is associated with a family of importance to the community specifically Ray Hayes who served as a state senator between nineteen thirty and nineteen forty-two, and has architectural distinction as a rambling county estate and complex with multiple design influences in Fresno and the country between the two world wars. Following the distribution of tonight's meeting packet, I received some updates and additional information regarding Senator Ray Hayes from Professor David Davenport to contribute to the nomination. Senator Hayes died toward the end of, sorry, died toward the end of December in nineteen seventy-two and not nineteen seventy-three on the twenty-seventh, and was subsequently buried at Red Bank Cemetery in Clovis. He served as a colonel in the US Army during World War One and was a general of the State of California between nineteen forty-three and nineteen forty-four. Because the Senator Ray W. and Marie Hayes home appears to be eligible for the local register of historic resources, staff recommends that the commission approve the request for designation and forward to city council.
Beautiful home.
What is an adjutant general?
Good question. I imagine, I imagine Dave Davenport would know, but maybe Don Simmons.
It's the, the, adjutant general became the attorney general.
Oh, okay.
Just the old. The office last week.
No other questions for staff? Hearing none, I'd like to open it up to the property owner to say something or to the public to make a comment? Sure. Please sit.
The official chair.
Exactly, if you could say your name and address for the record, that'd be great, thank you.
My name is Ryan Eddings, my address is sixteen sixteen South Minnewawa Avenue. It is listed as sixteen oh eight, but the post office doesn't recognize that address. I'm here with my wife and then also Chris Hayes, whose grandfather is Ray Hayes who built the house. And she grew up down the street, I'm sure she'll be happy to tell you all about the house. You know, we really obviously love the house. We think it's an important piece of the local history, but I also think it's really important for the Sunnyside neighborhood. And I was happy that by some quirk, this is actually in the city of Fresno where a lot of the neighborhood isn't. And so, you know, I think that Carana did a great job in explaining the history of the house and of Mr. Hayes, but I'd be happy to answer any questions or if there's anything else that we can provide for you in making your decision.
I don't have anything, I'd like to say that normally we sneak around houses like this pretty well, but you've got your properties a little bit bigger and I was hanging out with my family there, I was like, "I'm not gonna go sneak on the property." Normally we get a little bit, little bit closer than that, but with the perimeter landscape.
There's not a lot to be.
She's only five, I just need to teach her the right way.
We, uh, we lived in the neighborhood for almost ten years and I didn't know the house was there until I saw it for sale, so it's, it's very secluded.
Great olive trees.
It's got a curving driveway?
It's, uh, yeah, it's kind of like a long circular driveway off to the side, so you really only can see the garage and maybe a little bit of the workshop. The rest of the house you just, you can't see. There is a, a house, the one on the bottom right is not our house, but there's a newspaper article that has both of the homes from nineteen thirty-eight when they opened. And, and so that was owned by the Finston family, he was a UC regent. We think they were built by the same architect, but we don't, we don't know that, we're still working on it. But they're right across the street from each other, this is on the southeast corner of Butler and Minnewawa.
Oh yeah, this was.
This is southwest.
Is it, um, is it pretty well preserved? Are you looking for the designation to do improvements or?
No.
Let, let Chris speak today.
I will tell you, it's, it's, um.
Mills Act?
All the windows are the same, are original, all the door, for the most part the door hinges, all the doors are original. The only thing that's changed is on one of the pictures, the bottom porch was enclosed. But other than that, yeah, you can see the bottom porch, which is the four windows on the left, was enclosed. But other than that, it's, it's all original.
Beautiful, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Come on up, your turn. I'm not gonna be able to hold you back, so you might as well come up here.
Well, when you get to grow up with a family house like this, you know it's magical. There are more interesting pieces of information, my grandfather actually was. Oh, I'm sorry, yes, I'm Chris Hayes and I grew up at nineteen oh eight South Minnewawa. So I lived down the street. So on the forty-four acres when I was a child, it was my parents' house, a farm worker's house, my parents' house, grandparents, farm workers, parents, and ultimately my aunt and uncle. And that was all that was on that forty-four acres. We don't know what the history of the acreage was originally, but the fact that it was bordered by olive trees and in fact there was sort of an L-shaped olive tree and there's a railroad spur right there, we're wondering if there was at some point some sort of packing facility for olives or fruits, because then we go onto the Minewawa Ranch, which is just across the tracks. So, um, as far as the house being preserved, I can tell you, because I grew up in that house, that it is, with the exception of the tile being replaced on the kitchen counter, everything is exactly as it was when I was a child, all the flooring, all of the countertop tiles, all the bathrooms, the wallpapers have been taken down. A lot of even the same light fixtures are still there. And it's been a real joy to get to work on the house with them, because I am a designer and I still have dreams that take place in this house from when I was a child. So that's how beautiful the house is to me. So my grandfather, which actually in World War One was part of Pancho Villa's, he was cavalry. And so, and my dad was actually a page in the senate when my grandfather was in the senate. So, uh, my dad still to his dying day could recite from memory everyone that was in the senate when he was a page. But of course if he got anything wrong, none of us would have been able to prove it, but he, you know, like you recite the alphabet, he would go, da-da-da-da-da, all through the whole thing. And it, we just, I thought that was really cool, so anyway. It's, the screen porches were always there. What they did is they were originally just screened and we used to ride our bikes down and spend the night there, every night, because my grandma would feed us junk food for breakfast and my mom wouldn't let us have it. And the only thing that the previous owners did is they made them more substantial and made it more of an all-weather porch on the bottom half so they could use it as a family room. But truly, with the exception of some of the vegetation changing, the house has just hardly changed at all, at all. So, any questions?
Is Carana just excited to work on this as you are?
Carana's just great fun to work with, no matter what. Her enthusiasm about everything cool in Fresno is infectious, so.
Just reading it, I could just see the excitement.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And I do, I have walked into one other house in the Fig Garden area that when I walked in, my, you know, my antenna went up, I could tell it was the same builder. And, and I suppose if we want to go further into researching this, perhaps they might know the name of the architect, because it would be the Einstein Eaton family, the one on Van Ness. But we, I haven't asked them yet, but you know, if we needed to find out further information about that kind of thing, I know it has to have been built by the same person, so, anyway.
Fascinating, thank you.
Yeah. Anything else? Hi, Robin. Okay, well, thank you very much.
Would anyone else like to comment from the public? Hearing none, I'll bring it back into the commission. Final comments or a motion?
I'll make a motion that we accept staff's recommendation to have this to make.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And the ayes have it, of course, that was an easy one. All right, commission item B, please.
So with item B, I'm gonna be relying a lot on you all as well as fellow staff for any institutional knowledge you might have regarding the surveys that have been conducted over the years and any potential districts that have been named in the past. So I prepared a handout for you, which will also be on the screen, but I thought it might be easier for you to look at, it's right in front of you. I also have, in case it's helpful, a map with... This map was prepared by one of our GIS specialists with the help of Amber, I believe, last year. So it's, you know, relatively up to date and it lists our designated historic districts as well as any districts that were, have been proposed at that time. So I can, you know, scan around here if you need me to, if that's helpful. Just for note, the designated districts are the Porter Tract Historic District, the Chandler Field Fresno Municipal Airport, Wilson Island Historic District, Huntington Boulevard Historic District, and Armenian Town Historic District, which is approved by the commission and it's pending city council approval. And I'll kind of leave it for y'all to steer where we go, where we go from here.
These other ones are, like, for instance, the top one, you found somewhere that it was mentioned in nineteen eighty-five about making this district?
I came across this one, so this list of all of these surveys and potential districts are based on notes that I found from Carana as well as I was digging through any physical files we might have had. We have like, you know, file cabinets full of surveys done. So I came across this one, which I hadn't noted, in Carana's notes, the North Van Ness Boulevard slash Avenue Historic District. I don't know if it's at all familiar to you, if you've ever heard of it or.
And these are in chronological order of the, when they were identified?
Right, from when they were identified, yes. So, you know, I'm hoping that, you know, based on our discussion, we can come up with at least a direction to go in based on the surveys that have been conducted, all the work that's been done before, decide where we want to go from here. And it can be, we can come up with a document, whether it's formal or informal, with a priority district list, or, you know, we can decide how we want to move forward with these, all of these surveys that have been conducted. It seems like we have a lot of documentation, you know, we should do, maybe think about doing something with it.
Do you have a map that correlates with all these?
Well, not all of them, I have, at least, uh, so it's, it's this one.
So we have several of the map, but not quite all of them?
We have many of them on this map, but not all of them. But hopefully this helps give a good foundation for what we're looking at.
Is there any way you could send that to me? My email?
And I can, this map was meant for large format printing, so that's why it's a little difficult to see. Happy to pan around to whatever area we want to look at.
Well, of these that you have listed here, do you have a sense of which of these are closer to the goalpost than the others?
Or the Hitching Post?
Yeah.
Sorry.
Definitely gonna be relying on y'all a lot to help me figure that out. I read, well, since you bring up the Hitching Post District, I was reading in some minutes that it was at least discussed at a meeting at one point and then it was, I guess, decided that further research was needed. I think that's the case for a lot of these, like, there's interest and there's, you know, some work that has been done on them, but maybe some of them require some more research and work to be done. And I think that's the case in two thousand twelve, I think Carana had suggested a thematic historic district for mid-century modern resources and then the result of that was just the determination that further research was needed. So, you know, maybe that's the case for all of these. But, and you'll also note on the last page, two thousand eighteen, I just went ahead and noted areas that you all had brought up at our last meeting and just things that have come up with city staff as well in conversation.
Formal study hasn't been done on these, right? These are just ideas of potential, you know, things that.
But a lot of these that you noted last week, it seems like were also recommended in the two thousand eight mid-century modernism historic context.
So there's some overlap there?
Yeah, there's definitely some overlap among this list.
I think my question, coming on the heels of the L Street situation a month ago, is are there any of these that we think are more in danger of being lost?
I know not too long ago, we had surveyed all those warehouses and everything over here and so.
The South Van Ness?
South Van Ness, and it's something that I, I thought there was a lot of significance to carve out a district there and I was hoping it would kind of bubble up faster than, because we were on a pretty good track after reviewing that and getting the work done and staff did a good job putting it together, so it's ready.
And that was a massive area.
I mean, yeah, the document, you know, the documentation that went along with it was extensive.
And just thinking about progress on, on future kind of downtown renovation, that sort of helps in that process with Mills Act. I mean, that, that seems like my personal number one.
I would suggest, and it's mentioned in the two thousand eight listings, the Yosemite Avenue Local District, because of the number of properties that are already individually on the local register on Yosemite Avenue, there seems to be a preponderance of properties already there. And so it seemed like a logical step to go ahead and designate that as a district because there are so many. And as well as perhaps the thematic district of the Hitching Post is, you know, I would see that it's definitely being at risk because people don't understand their significance and don't understand, they don't even know what they are. And so builders and developers are much more apt to destroy something that, out of ignorance rather than, and sort of willful, willfully destroying them. But the last count was there were sixteen of them identified, I'm sure there are more, but sixteen is a good start for thematic development. And then for the mid-century modern, that was, that garnered a whole lot of public support, you know, as it was being discussed and people kept bringing new properties and saying, "Look at this one," and "What about this?" and Stevens and Zellner, and they were coming. So those also, my perception is that mid-century modern is most at risk because people think if it's not older than them, it can't possibly be historic. And, and so that, it's, you know, we've already lost so many mid-century modern, particularly downtown, from the San Francisco Forest and on and on and to gas stations and other buildings that I would think that those are particularly at risk.
And if I'm reading this correctly, it looks like that could be multiple potential districts that came out of that study. Are there any in particular that, you know, would maybe be worth looking at at first? Are there any that are of interest or the whole group of them? Because there's a lot there, is why I ask, so.
I think because of the, from my opinion, the current emphasis on Blackstone Boulevard, to have a better Blackstone, would dovetail well with identifying the historic resources there and designating a historic district, because as, you know, if, if Blackstone becomes a hot development property, then we are not protecting our resources that, that are there. And so we need to make sure that by the district designation, it's another layer of protection.
The city's identified Blackstone as a core for redevelopment.
Absolutely, yeah, right.
Like they did with downtown and all those surveys, that should, the city's already identified that and they're pushing it, then we should have this queued up and ready to go.
Well, and, you know, preservation and infill aren't mutually exclusive, but if you identify your resources ahead of time, then you know where to focus development and where not and you can kind of have the two coexist. If you don't get out ahead of it, then, then you could end up with clashes there. So, you know, that's a great point, that identifying it before that revitalization effort really picks up steam is probably the right time.
It seems like when we don't get out ahead of it, that's exactly what happens. The first building purchased is the historic, the lead potential historic.
If it's only five percent of the building stock that's worth preserving, that five percent will get the first proposal, right?
Because it looks, looks cool and then, oh, by the way, it's too much to fix up, so we're gonna demo it and then we find ourselves in that position over and over and over again.
If we learned so much about Cedar Lanes too late, it was, it was demolished for, what, a Walmart or another project long. Keep saying, it's, we've identified it, we, you know, we, we think it's worth protecting, but because we were really slow on the mid-century modern district, which that was included in it and the bank adjacent to it, then it's, we lost it. And so I, I see that happening. And that's, that, that's why I, I like your question, you know, where's the low-hanging fruit here? Well, we've got lots of them and hopefully they won't take as long as, as some of the other processes.
Prior to, prior to me joining that, the Cedar Lanes, I don't know if it came to the HPC or not, but I know Carana, who I was working with on that project, reviewed it and it came back as not eligible for one reason or another, so. But the bank itself is like a shining example.
Yeah, the bank. Commission was split on Cedar Lanes. And that took a long time.
That might have been my client.
Joe Moore, Ryan, probably, remember? They were a part of this as well. And we fought hard for Cedar Lanes and lost.
So would it be useful to, like, identify the top five so we can focus? I mean, there's a lot of stuff here, but let's make it manageable.
Yeah, I've heard some great ideas, I mean, the list, the running list that I've got is South Van Ness Industrial, Yosemite Avenue, Hitching Post Thematic District, Mid-Century Blackstone as some of the potential candidates for a top list. Did I miss any? Did you take any notes on any other ones that were discussed? Okay.
So we're interested in doing more with modernism and particularly on Blackstone? Is that what?
Yeah.
Okay.
Blackstone seems to be the, I mean, most of the residential rooms are already well-kept and the residents of Fig Garden. But Blackstone and Shaw are some of the areas where we might lose potential interest.
One, one possibility to just throw out there for you guys to think about is, you know, we could always come up with, if the goal is maybe a top five list, maybe today we come up with a list of more than five and then we can go back, focus in on the data available. Let's say we came up with a top ten or a top eight tonight, see which ones, you know, have a lot of the needed information already assembled and are a little closer to the finish line and then we could kind of come back with status reports on all of them and between, you know, the, the level of risk or, you know, other things versus the amount of information that's already available and ready to go, kind of shovel-ready, if you will, then we can synthesize those two things together and you guys can maybe pick your top five out of that, you know, and if there's a couple that are, you know, maybe most sensitive and most ready to go, boom, those naturally rise to the top and then kind of work our way down from there. Just one potential way to, to do it.
And Dan, I would think along with that, you would also be able to say, okay, we have these that have lots of information and maybe even a little analysis of the ones farther down that have less, so what resources realistically would be needed to move those forward? And then we'll kind of be able to say. And then we'll kind of be able to say, well, we really feel strongly about this, even though it might take more resources.
Yeah. And if there's any of those, that huge amount of interest, but we don't have a lot of information together yet, then maybe we go after a CLG grant, like we did for South Van Ness Industrial, right? So that we can get some resources to, to help, you know, do that work.
Do you want to add some more to the list?
Probably Chinatown, I feel, especially the.
Yeah. Yeah, we're just adding to the list.
Right.
No, go ahead.
I was just saying, I guess they did not realize that St. John's was not a recognized district.
That's never been formalized.
No. St. John's Cathedral is individually on the local register, but, but that neighborhood is not a district.
It's not?
No, the only, the only four we've got are the Chandler Airport, Wilson Island, where we live, around Waschan and McKinley, Tower District, Porter Tract behind City College, and then Huntington Boulevard, and then, you know, soon, Old Armenian Town will go. And that's it. So we have a bunch of others that have been looked at to one degree or another, could probably easily be historic districts, but they've never been taken all the way through. And so St. John's, I mean, geez, Terrace Gardens seems like low hanging fruit to me. I mean, that's a very intact, you know, neighborhood. For example, so there's, there's a lot of them out there that maybe ought to be, you know, maybe could be, but haven't. So.
Well, it seems like just being able to decide one way or the other and then move on down the list.
Yeah, yeah.
Can I ask, maybe it's, it's a broader question than just a list. But when I review designated properties and districts, just bluntly speaking, it's all pretty white. Our ethnic diversity here in Fresno is not very well represented in our historic districts or in our, our individual listings, particularly African-American, Southeast Asian. And, and we'll take a big step toward that with the Old Armenian Town. But it's a pretty white history here, and that's not representative of Fresno. And so is there some way to make sure that as we look at moving forward, that we really are representative? And it's, it's, if someone were to, to do a research project and look at designated historic properties in Fresno and Fresno County, it, it would, it'd be a glaring statement as to how Caucasian it is. And, and that's true across California as well as true as representation on, on the commission. White, white commissions designate white properties. And, and at some point, we need to draw attention that that's not what we want to say. And by designating more properties that represent other ethnic heritages, we could take a big step in this. Chinatown would be a big part of that, designating the properties related to the Japanese internment, some of which we've already lost in Sugar Pine and downtown. But we have numerous properties that could be related to other ethnic neighbors. And we, we need to pay attention to that.
There's a beautiful neighborhood right at the beginning of Huntington Boulevard going out in, in West Fresno.
You mean Kearney?
Kearney, yeah. Kearney, excuse me. Kearney Boulevard.
Yeah.
Beautiful neighborhood in there. Well taken care of.
And so how do we address what's missing, get more districts, but also pay attention to all of our neighbors?
I think bringing it up is the first natural step. I think that's great. I mean, some of these neighborhoods here identified as potential districts have that very, you know, legacy, Chinatown and some of the other ones. I think that's definitely something to kind of keep an eye on and be aware of. And the first step is bringing it up and shining a light on it so that we can all keep that in mind as we move forward. And as you guys give us a list, having that as one of the factors that you think of in your suggestions to us is a great way to start.
Now I'd like to open up to the public. Come on up. Name and address for the record, please.
My name's Jeanette Jurgovich. I live at thirty-seven twenty-nine East Huntington Boulevard, and it's in a historic district. And I'm glad to hear that we're thinking about more districts. To address your question, Don, the one thing that is pretty interesting about a historic area is that they are usually very encompassing of a lot of different economic, you know, stances. Not necessarily racial, though. That's a very interesting thing because we were different then than we are now. So, but the thing that I think is missing in talking about all of this is trying to find a way, too, that we can fit within the day and some of our problems. We need more affordable housing. Well, a lot of these historic homes are very affordable housing, but they're off on their own and it's a troubled area. You don't know if the other guy is going to invest like you invest. And, ah, you know, you just don't want to do it. Historic districts and designation of historic districts is an economic development tool. You think strategically. And the thing is, is just like on Huntington, okay? Huntington's got every mix of income, and it's been one of those communities that has stood the test of time. But the thing of it is, if you take the hundred and twenty-one, now, I'm going to admit, city council screwed this up and allowed people to opt out. But if you approach it this way, you'll have better success, too. But the thing is, if you know that the hundred and twenty-one houses that are living next to you are going to all keep their property up, and they're going to all follow the same rules for how they develop their properties and stuff like that, you've got an elevated economic tool just right there. A, a kind of a more certainty of investment than you do if, say, I moved down on Swift by Blackstone or something like that, which is where I grew up. But, you know, the thing is, is approaching it as an economic development tool, seeing what that could do to unleash more investment in affordable housing. And, you know, it, it still fits the criteria. But I'm thinking, for example, Bulge. Bulge is a very troubled area, has great little housing stock, would be a great little affordable area for people. But gosh, if you go in and you buy, that's risky because you don't know what that guy's doing. You know? So if you look at some of these areas and you make them historic districts, people worry about regulation. They don't understand, they don't think about it. With a certain amount of regulation comes certainty of investment. You like to know what the rules are going to be when you invest. So that was just my thought. As you think about this, think about what this was developed for. It was developed for preserving history. But the cities that have taken advantage of it across, you know, a lot in the east, I'm going to say, a lot in the east, they realized it was an economic development tool. And that's why it's a land use ordinance, or I mean, a land use zoning that gets done. And so you have to think of it that way, too. And, but then when you go and approach people, you approach them as, well, would you like to live in a neighborhood where everybody was going to play by the same rules? And, and they're going to say, yeah, you know? So anyway, that's, that's the thing that's missing. City council doesn't get it. I was, on my way over here, I was thinking, it'd be really cool if we had, if everybody just did a little study on the economic benefits of historic districts and kind of came and shared, and shared it with the public, put it in their minutes. There it would be for council eventually when you brought that thing. You can develop your economy by tearing down and rebuilding. You can also develop your economy by making it more investor-friendly for those people that are going to live in those existing resources. And that's a little bit greener way to go about things, too. So anyway, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Anyone else like to come up and talk? We've got, we're making a list of districts. Put your vote in.
George Hostetter, seven-thirty West Side Ramon here in Fresno. Just two quick things. One, a public hearing, and there is an important document for the public, and it's not on the table. Like I say, at planning commission, there are always the documents that the commissioners discuss. The public can get a copy of them beforehand, and it really helps a public hearing if your public can follow along with what you're doing. And, because it is a public record. And so I hope after the meeting that I can get a copy of the document. But it'd be nice if they were here for all of the audience members.
I think we also.
This was posted online, okay.
And then two, just real quick, and I'll be done. But I say, it's a public hearing, so if people speak up, that's nice. Don Simmons, you know, that's a voice that I could hear if I was in the council chamber now. And I, and I appreciate that. And perhaps the audience members have better hearing than I do, but I am guessing some people have bad hearing. So if there's a mumbling, it's not a public hearing. Thank you.
Thank you. And just to clarify on the first point about documents, these, the, the presentations published on our website, correct?
I didn't see this on the website, but maybe I didn't look good enough.
No, the presentation is not. The presentation is just prepared for the meeting.
Okay.
So there were no documents prepared to distribute to the public.
Well, and this was just an item for discussion. There's no action. There's no action being contemplated. And this was just something that I think Laura thought would be helpful.
Okay.
Yeah, this is not a formal public hearing.
Yeah, there's no.
And it's not a formal document.
It's being discussed in public. I don't know how it's being discussed in public. That's game, set, match, as far as I'm concerned. So just thank you.
No, we appreciate it, really. Any other comments, public?
I didn't plan on, on, on talking about this. But as Don knows, I'm, although I own a nineteen thirty-seven house, I'm actually a modernist. And so I would encourage you to take up the modernist architecture, because there's really so much of it here. And hopefully it could raise the awareness of people in a community who own these homes. Because they, they really are in neighborhoods that are, well, for lack of a better term, sprawl has sort of left these neighborhoods behind. And they're fifty, sixty years old. A lot of people go in there and they think this has to be gutted. And, and if, it would be awesome if people would view them like the way they view a Taylor Wheeler, where there are things that we could, we could really capture and, and highlight. And that would be a selling feature, the way that when I bought my house built in nineteen thirty-seven, that I liked the fact that there was original tile and, and everything that's original in it, and didn't see things that were going to have to be replaced. So I, I, it's not why I came here. And I'm still deeply saddened about the Fulton Mall, but at least I would encourage you to, to, to really highlight modernism, because I, I do think it's something that's unique and is a selling feature for this community.
Thank you. And I would add to that, probably harder for most people to see, because the element of modernism is simplicity. And so it doesn't, we're so often picking out the little tidbits on all the architecture, whereas modernism really is just a simple, clean state. It's hard to pick that out. Back to the council commission. Any other comments? More to the list?
Well, what do we got so far? I think we've got eight.
South Van Ness Industrial, Yosemite Avenue, Hitching Posts, Mid-Century Blackstone, Mid-Century Shaw, Chinatown.
Terrace Gardens, you mentioned?
Yeah, I had thrown that out, but.
St. John's.
I don't want to speak for you guys, so.
The warehouse.
Warehouse row?
That one's, yeah.
Yes. Well, with the warehouse.
South Van Ness?
Actually, it's listed as the Thematic Automotive Historic District. That is not a.
Cultural Arts District.
Cultural Arts District. Yes.
Let's make sure we get the right one. Don, which year is that under? Oh, here we go, two thousand six.
Two thousand six.
Arts, culture. The historic warehouse district or the thematic automotive?
The thematic automotive historic district.
No, that one says it was determined ineligible.
That was a, that was a question. I know something related to automotive industry was determined ineligible.
There, a whole row of them was demolished for an apartment complex, which was a lot like L Street, a developer.
Don, do you know the geographic area of the one that you intend to add to the list? And then we'll make sure to discern which, that we get the right one and bring it back to you next, next month? Do you remember where it was roughly?
Broadway, what's that? Amador.
Okay.
Amador, Broadway.
Yeah, because there, there is one that I saw called Broadway Row at one point.
Yeah, Broadway Row was listed. It's, the old triple A building is down there. It's now an architecture firm. And so it's centered around that, near, near the Rainbow Ballroom.
Okay, we'll make sure we get the right one.
Can I echo Jeanette's comments about viewing historic districts as an economic development engine? My family lives in Savannah in Charleston. My, my brother lives on an island called Skidaway Island in Savannah. Most of the house is built in nineteen fifties and nineteen sixties. And they, you know, he's a part of Heritage Savannah. Part of their strategy is to designate a neighborhood as a historic district first. And then they know that development will follow. The flippers will come in, the money will follow. It will come in once it's there because of the, first, the protections and also the economic benefits of the buildings that are there. You move a little outside of downtown Savannah, you get to the islands where the houses were built in the fifties and sixties. Those are being plowed down. My brother said, we lose about two a day because people will plow them down and build a McMansion, triple the size of it, build it. But they're losing all of their mid-century architecture in there that just cover the islands because somehow or another, mid-century modern pairs well with homes built around the turn of the century. And so that's where I think we're heading if we don't start to sort of force the case of historic districts as economic development engines. First, you know, as green, but then it can, can make a difference in terms of everything from home values to, to property crime. All of those things are a part of what comes with a district. And so I, I agree that I don't think our council understands that. I don't know that many people here in this building understand that. But I think it's our responsibility to kind of drive this and to be more aggressive with the districts, that we should always be pushing the next district. Because individually is, is not going to be the only protection. So that's why by the time the houses on Yosemite said yes to, to individual designation, they really, you know, never had the conversation about a district. And so that's why we need to, to act with some urgency on these.
I think that we, that's when we capture, that's when we capture neighborhoods in the southwest. That's when we get, that's when we can take, because a lot of these neighbors have, have some really great working class houses in there. But they might have been messed up with a poorly done stucco wrap and stuff. But if you can, like, you can see that there's a conglomerate of really well-kept houses. And if put in a district, even the stucco wraps might flip back over to something that's more representative of, of the district. And then we start gaining houses instead of losing houses.
Think of the, the South Fresno, the, the Julia Morgan Building that we lost in, in South Fresno. Part of it is just no neighborhood recognition at all that there was anything like that there. But also, that neighborhood itself could have been a significant area with that as a showpiece for it. But it's an apartment complex now. But it was a Julia Morgan building.
Where was that, Don?
The exact street, I, it's in, it's off of Fresno, in south, South Fresno. And it was a hospitality house. And Housing Authority and a developer took it down. And I have the privilege of having been on this commission since 2006, so I know this conversation really well and just, we haven't moved fast enough.
Well, it seems like this is a really good start tonight.
So we've got, what, 10 in the queue?
Almost, I think we're at eight.
I've got eight.
You said Hitching Posts?
Nine, I've got nine. So I've got South Van Ness Industrial, Yosemite Avenue, Hitching Posts, mid-century Blackstone, mid-century Shaw, Chinatown, Terrace Gardens, St. John's and the warehouse, one of the warehouse districts identified in the arts, culture survey from 2006, the one that's centered around Broadway and Amador. So that's nine. That's a pretty good list for us to start with and then we can do a deeper dive on those to see the status of all of them, how much information we already have available, any background stuff that we can pull together, we can, we can give, do a little closer look at each one of them to kind of explore next time, you know, to pull up aerial photographs and things like that, help get a better sense of how intact they, they might roughly be or, you know, how endangered they may or may not be and then see if any of them, through that data, will kind of rise to the top.
Sounds like a good plan.
Cool.
Anything else, Commissioner?
Just, I want to ask, should we be authorizing staff that if, if there are some that have really the work done, that they bring them to us next month?
To actually act on.
Right. I mean, I don't know if that exists or not.
Yeah, I don't know if any of them at all are there, but I would...
I think if you find that, we're ready to not hesitate. Just ask.
I might suggest, John, tell, or Laura, tell me if you guys disagree, I think the, maybe the way to go would be for us to, if, if any of these fit that category, to identify that for you next month and then maybe next month would be the, once you have that information in front of you, then that would maybe be the time to, to give us that direction.
Yeah, I think what you proposed originally, which it sounded like the commission was on board, was that this'll, they'll, this'll be kind of the first stage of the whittling process, then we'll have a few, little bit, maybe a deeper, more specific dive next meeting, but I don't, I don't know if we're ready, if, if the thought is that bringing, there'd be something up for a vote next meeting.
That's not what I was...
A little premature.
I, I agree.
Happy to continue the discussion though, do more, you know, do more work within the coming months.
Bye, next month.
Thank you for the list.
Should know which ones are the closest as far as the background surveys done and everything, right?
The list took some doing to find.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, just to get to this point, this comes from multiple different sources, Laura had to do a bit of digging.
And you know, I wasn't sure it was all correct, so I wanted to make sure too with you all that everything on here looked right. That's part of the reason why it wasn't distributed to the public, because I wanted to make sure it was all correct.
And the commission has gone through a variety of people taking minutes and some no minutes at all, you know, sometimes we recreate it from memory and so it's, thank you for going through the trouble.
I would like to know where a lot of these places are.
Yeah, the...
Because I haven't been on the commission that long to...
Yeah, right. Well, the ones that, we'll, we'll map all of the ones that, that were discussed today, so you guys can, you know, as you think of them, you can look and then Laura, maybe as a last bit to that point, it's a little, we, you know, we didn't have the time to kind of break this up into something that could easily be zoomed in, but why don't you go into the legend and look at the list of what we actually have mapped and then kind of pan over to each of them, just so the ones where that is available, you guys can at least have a sense of them. So Chandler, I think we all know where that is, that's designated, Huntington, Porter Tract and Wilson Island, those are designated. Why don't we start with the, what was that one at Kearney Boulevard, is that one that...
I guess that was determined eligible for national register at some point.
National register eligible. Do you want to go to that part of the map and see, show them where that is exactly? That would be interesting to see.
That is right here.
Gotcha, so not the actual structures, it's the palms and the trees? Yep. The Adeline?
So Adeline Palm and Lower Fulton Van Ness, as well as Terrace Gardens and Wilson's North Fresno Tract were all included in the Tower District specific plan, if I'm not mistaken, so can see that a little bit.
Terrace Gardens is north of Clinton, around Van Ness Boulevard. Wilson's North Fresno Tract includes Wilson Island, but it also takes in more of the Tower District. It looks like the shading didn't show through on this, on this map for some reason.
I don't know why, it shows up on here.
But it's, it's some of the blocks south and, and east of Wilson Island.
Now, where is, where's Belmont in regards to the Adeline Palm corridor?
Southern boundary, I think, right?
Southern boundary.
Yeah.
It runs along right here.
And now that we've got a dairy building over there and some neighbors and some beautiful homes in there, so it'll be something to maybe consider as we look down.
Yeah, right.
Yeah.
Well, yeah. Luckily, these are labeled, so why don't we just, I don't think we need to go to the legend.
Yeah, seems to be, you know, thinking about it.
So there's several within the freeway triangle, North Park, you know, which encompasses most of what we know as Lowell neighborhood nowadays.
Well, that's the North Park?
Yeah, that's the one.
Okay, see, I didn't recognize the name.
Right, right, and then Lower Fulton Van Ness was identified on a separate occasion as being part of that. St. John's, you can see there in the dark green, that was identified as a potential in one of the surveys of the past. Santa Fe Warehouse area around the train station where Will Dyke has done a lot of work recently and State Center Warehouse and all of those. Uptown Cultural Arts, that was identified, I think, in Rakovich, right?
Right, a lot of these were from the Rakovich Plan Reconnaissance Survey in 1994.
Yeah, and then this map also shows some of the very early ethnic neighborhoods, right? Can you pan? There you go, so the, the original extent of Old Armenian Town was much larger than, than what remains today as, as the recommended historic district.
That's that district I was talking about, the Kearney Boulevard.
Uh-huh, right, exactly.
What is that?
So, yeah, that's the, the actual street itself.
Madison neighborhood?
From the, the historic arch all the way out past Chandler Field. But yeah, you've got the old Armenian, German, Italian neighborhoods, Chinatown, which has some extensive work done, there's, we have some pretty hefty documentation on Chinatown.
Huntington Boulevard's here and I think that's all we have labeled on this map as far as...
And then there's the small ones there, north of St. John's, the East Madison and the Bellevue Bungalow. Yeah, so those are all the ones that we have mapped on this one, so there's, you know, there's a lot of work that's already been done out there to identify things that might be and, and like I said, we don't have them all mapped just yet, so there's even more. Now, does this, look at the map, alter our list at all? Are there any that, that you want to throw on based on this or we'll go with those nine and, and dive deeper into them next month?
That's a good start.
Can I mention something about the Kearney part?
Sure.
But one of the things that's really forgotten in Fresno is how we came to be in the colony settlement system and Kearney was one guy, Chapman another, but it would be very interesting to look at those houses and see how many of those were part of the Kearney colony that had been started. There were about 64 different colonies and the way that we got Armenians and all of the different groups is because of these colonies. They sent out, the Board of Trade and Board of Immigration realized there was no shipping, railroad shipping going through the Central Valley and the railroad was upset. So they got together and they developed paperwork to send to all these troubled countries. And these troubled countries, these people would get these and they would tell you that, you know, Fresno, California had land and if you had a team of horses, you could make 50 cents a day or a dollar 50 a day. If you didn't have a team of horses, it'd be about a third of that, that there were these plots of land that you could buy and you could probably, if you worked hard, get one in 18 months and what you'd plant when you got it. The colony system that was used in Fresno County is completely forgotten and it is one of the most fascinating things that made us a diverse and very agricultural-centered area. So, I mean, looking at one like that, if, if the Kearney has something like that, could be really very edifying, it could be interesting to people who came, there's a reason the houses are so far apart, but what you typically found, they would tell you, you could buy 10 acres, 20 acres was enough to, you know, sustain your family, 40 acres was the most that you could handle for a family and, you know, and so you, you just, it just, you just see how the, the largest agricultural economy in the world came to be and it's a pretty fascinating story. So I think that one would be really good, if, if there's that tie and I have never sat and mapped that out to see where it is. But the central colony area, the biggest one, was Chapman and Kearney and a few others. A lot of that's going to be Amazon. And, and a lot of those old houses and those 20-acre parcels are no longer evident, it's unfortunate.
I know that every report, every cultural resource management report that I've done in this area has addressed colony systems. We did it in the southwest of Fresno, specific plan, and also addressed many ethnic communities in there as well.
Yeah, because that's...
It's, it's there, we talk about it, but it never gets translated into actions.
But the people that were in Armenia having trouble, they got their information in Armenian. The Croatians, I mean, the Adriatic Fic came from the coast of Croatia and so they came, the Armenians, the, you know, these all brought their own thing here and created a very ethnically diverse, so if history, if history can do something, something like that is really profound, I think, for a town like Fresno who thinks it has no identity, it has a hugely wonderful identity and preservation could bring that to light, then, you know, and bring economy too.
I wonder how much of that, how much of that is in within city limits versus out in county limits?
Not a lot, not a lot. I mean, in South Fresno it is. When you go southeast, several colonies there, you're out of sight of the city limits, Tard Malaga, Easton, the Washington Colony, so, but there is some.
Very cool. Very cool, anything else? Anyone? Hearing nothing, no chairperson's report, unscheduled items, members of the commission?
I think we had a pretty good night the other night.
Congratulations.
Yeah.
And thank you for going.
Yeah, it was, it was interesting, so it's a big win for the community that producers is not going to Tardos buildings now?
Producers.
Yeah.
Producers, yes. It was just kind of give you a report, public came and drove, they all spoke, it was, they were very intelligent too and just bringing to light what's going on. We had diversity there as well, that brought a lot of attention to that neighborhood and that district and lo and behold, in 94, there was a covenant between producers and the neighbors and so that really shed some fantastic light to allowing the, the project to forego the demolition part. There's still some further steps. What happened beyond that was more of, looks like the mayor and their task force helped finds a parking lot, as you will, for producers to continue to park their trailers, but this particular neighborhood has already been inundated with traffic and, and, you know, there's kids crossing for school right there and it, it was a good conversation, went on a very long time. There were some angry people, but all in all, I was pleased with the results and it, it will go through more steps, I know, but we, we managed to see the public come out and help preserve buildings that need to be there, so.
Can I ask a question for clarification for staff? And I may have this completely wrong, but to use the phrase, for purposes of SEQA, since this commission voted to designate the properties as historic, but the council did not, for purposes of SEQA, are they not, would they not then be considered historic resources, even though the council, this commission made the decision, but the council did not?
Yeah, I think we'll have to get back, but I, but I mean, ultimately, the designation is in the hands of council, so I believe it is not for purposes of SEQA designated as a historic resource. Now, we'll see what happens, because maybe now there's different view in the council, who knows? But no, I, at the end of the day, the council can override a designation or non-designation for historic resource, so it, it is not, not yet. But it's, this one's complicated, so I don't want to get it, because with the covenant, there's some weird stuff going, like, not weird, but it's, it's an unusual circumstance that has a lot of different pieces, so, and I'm not the attorney on it, so.
Because I know with some properties that are in, that are, have been called out in surveys, for purposes of SEQA, would be considered historic, even though they have not come, been formally designated.
If a resource has been determined eligible, it's considered a historic resource for purposes of SEQA.
And would that not be applicable in this situation, since it came before this council? This commission and because I don't read SEQA as having, you know, saying who, who does the designation, it's been called out, that it doesn't say by the council, you know, this body has done that work and so I, I think some clarification there would be...
Why don't we get back to that?
Well...
Are those reports approved by council at any point?
Yeah, didn't they approve the, the survey?
I guess what I'm getting at is if the survey comes through and it says, someone says, "That may be, that may be a contributor or that may be eligible for listing," ultimately that, whether it's whether the HPC lists it or not or puts it on the list, if it goes through the process, does that report get approved by council? Is that the process?
Are we talking in general or are we talking about producers and...
Theoretically.
In general, that's, they, they approve our reports and we send them there and so their review of, of what we, we send them is that not...
Right, well, you know, here, I, I think one of the, maybe the best scenarios to use is kind of a way to, to look at it is... kind of a way to, to look at it is, um, the process we go through when, um, um, a demolition permit is required on it, on something that's older, might be historic. So, the steps we go through are that, okay, historic preservation specialist pulls the demolition permit if it, if there's any possibility that there's anything historic happening on this site. Pulled, it's evaluated, if it is determined by the specialist to be potentially historic, then it's evaluated, and it's brought to this group for consideration as a resource. If you guys determine it's eligible, you recommend to the city council that they adopt it, I mean, designate it as historic. It goes to the city council, if the city council concurs, then it is designated historic, and removing it would be an impact that has to go through that whole SEQA process. If the council says, no, we do not concur with the recommendation, it is ineligible. It's been evaluated, it's gone through the whole process, determined by the governing body to be ineligible, then the demolition permit is issued and no SEQA is required, because it's gone all the way through the process, determined ineligible despite the recommendation, and, and it can, the demolition permit is issued, so.
But then it can always, the, the fault of SEQA is ultimately, it's the courts. It's not like NEPA or Section 106.
Right.
Right.
I mean, it can't, that is, that is the last.
There's not a body like this in Sacramento that determines, you know, yeah.
Well, yeah, I mean, and, and probably anything that's on the record anywhere, whether or not it was finally confirmed and approved, it certainly would be something that could be utilized in an action. And, uh, but, um, and I think that's why it's kind of like the process that we started today is a good, it's a good thing, 'cause we wanna give people, we wanna preserve, but we also wanna give people certainty. And I think, so I think, but yeah, I, I mean, probably to answer Dawn's question is that it, I could see somebody using the, the fact that something was voted on here and not approved by council. I, I'm not sure, from a legal standpoint, I love that, 'cause it kinda seems like, ah, we, you should, you should go yes or no, ultimately. But, um, but yeah, it shouldn't, um, it's not, it's, if the council votes no, it's not historic.
I guess it seems, like, to me, it seems like a difference of backgrounds. So we're, we professionally enlisted in the degrees and the expertise that we have, and come to the conclusion through years of training and research and everything else, that something is, uh, historic and is worthy of being preserved, and that council's determination, or lack thereof, is for other reasons than what we've come to. So we're looking at architecture and history and culture and everything else. Their challenges to list or not list are other than those. So.
Hopefully.
They might, so, so, so they vote no, because they're getting pressure from the builder, they're getting one thing or another, they're, they think it's anti-business or any number of things, but likely it's not going to be, likely there's not the background to cha- to challenge this body architecturally that it's worthy of listing or un- or delisting.
Which is probably why other municipalities do not have a system like this, where their local landmarks commission is the final word. It, they are the governing body. And, uh, it would seem that ours is a more antiquated process to send it to a council who's not aware of, of these things. And, um, it's, it's, you know, other, other cities don't do it this way. This one seems antiquated, is the kinder word I'll use. A follow-up with, with that is, well, um, does staff get to offer the mayor any, uh, recommendation? Uh, or does the mayor, you know, uh, have the opportunity to have a recommendation from this commission as to, uh, what, what should happen there and?
So you're talking producers in particular on this one?
Producers in particular, right.
Yeah, and, and, um, you know, I'll be honest with you, I'm still trying to fully understand exactly what, um, Thursday's action means in terms of moving forward and what role everybody would have. And, um, I did some, you know, asking around today to try to get to the bottom of that. I still don't fully understand it myself, so I don't know if you have any more clarity than I do.
No, not really, because they're, because they did, the, a, a lot of, as often happens when you're up on, when council members are up on the dais, and they're not, if they don't vote yes or no on exactly what's approved, it can be difficult. And that's why it is important to have everything available and, and all of that. But at least I think what happened, and I'm not gonna give an official opinion of the city attorney yet, or whatever, but I think what happened is there were, that it was not, that there were some restrictions put on what can happen, and I think that those restrictions have to do with the buildings. But it wasn't necessarily articulated and done in a way that I know exactly what that means. Like, 'cause in theory, they could've said, they could've designated them historic, and then considered them historic resources. I don't think that, I'm not sure that they said that clearly enough.
What was kinda emphasized was, they gotta adhere to the covenant they have, which means the buildings gotta remain, and if any are in ill-repair, they gotta be replaced with the exact replica, essentially is, is what, uh, the language was, uh, pointing to. And so if there is a project there, it won't be a project that was presented as a parking lot only project. So, um, yeah, so the, what they voted on was, was interesting, 'cause it wasn't, it wasn't carved out or hashed out, uh, very, very clear. But, uh, the, the clarity side of it was that the covenant has to be upheld, and that covenant has, the buildings written into it as far as their protective quality. And so that's the way I heard it in person.
Yeah, I just don't, yeah, that's, I think that's right, I just don't know exactly where that fits in legally.
What would be great, and I don't know if Dan can bubble this up to the mayor, is, um, you know, he's got this task force of, of people, and I don't know if on that task force, there's a historic, uh, preservation, uh, presence there. And it would be wise, I think, to, uh, to have some sort of a presence there, because if, if they're looking into plans downtown, uh, mayoral actions, uh, putting together deals, those things, makes sense to, to have some representation within that.
The only thing I would say to that is, you know, we kind of just work for the city, and.
That's true.
Maybe if you guys want that, more, go, go talk to council members and.
I'm hearing we need to do some educating ourselves.
Yeah.
To our council.
Yeah, and, and John, unless, you know, you have different thought on it, or Laura, it seems like, you know, I think it might be appropriate to, maybe on the next agenda, put this item on the agenda. I mean, we don't wanna get too deep into something that's not agendized, also, we've gotta watch that. Um, but, um, I think we, uh, we'd be willing to, um, to fully dig into this, really get what's, what happened last week, what's the next step, what does that all mean, and then come back and report to you guys so that you're fully in the, in the loop and, um, understanding exactly what it means and what's next, and how it's all gonna work.
Now, of course, how, how long was the negotiating?
Ninety days.
Ninety days.
So there is.
Yeah.
So we will have another meeting if, that, if there was something that the commission wanted to discuss and put formally, uh, in a, in any sort of action, that would, there would be time.
Like a resolution, um, to, does that have any bearing?
Um, let's see, how, it's a, we've got a, I, I don't, I think, so the commission does have some authority over historic resources, but since it's already in the final arbiter's hands, the council, I'm not sure it would be any more than a recommendation.
Would be a reconsideration.
Uh, no, 'cause procedurally, I don't, nothing has been brought directly before the commission's jurisdiction. So I don't, I don't see it that, that way as a, that anything, at least yet, has, has, but that could change depending upon how we evaluate what they did. 'Cause that's, and that's, that's why I'm a little hesitant to speak too much, 'cause it could, 'cause they could turn around and say, oh, well, technically, they designated it historic with that vote, and then if that's the case, then it should come here. But I don't think that has been completely sussed out yet. So I'll figure, I'll certainly figure, I can, I can take charge of seeing if the action brought it within the commission's jurisdiction, so I can certainly do that. Um, and then if not, so if yes, then obviously it has to be put on the agenda. I'm, I, I kinda think it probab- it may not have, but I, that's just my feeling, not as the attorney who is working on it, that they probably didn't intend to do that.
I don't think so.
But so then, the question is, what would you wanna do? Uh, so I don't know if you, if there's something that a member of the commission wants to propose for the agenda, they could certainly do that to us now, right?
Yes, uh, if you would, if we want to discuss that project?
Yeah, I would propose an update on, on the item.
Clarity on what the formal.
Right.
Vote was.
And with the next steps.
The next steps on, on the preservation steps.
I think it'd probably be helpful too, to, you know, go back and refresh us all on how we got to that point.
Right.
That happened last Thursday, what really happened like last Thursday, and then what's next.
There's my unscheduled item.
Can I, I have one more, I have one more request that, um, because we have a responsibility to, to visit the properties that are on the agenda, it's impossible to get the agenda, um, with a little more lead time, 'cause receiving it on Friday before the meeting, it's not enough time, um, to, to see the, to see the property.
One is out of town, yes.
Yeah, we're just, um, and I was fortunate that I've been friends with the property owner, so I've been to that property many times and seen it, so I knew what, what we were talking about, so. Uh, but otherwise, you know, there would've been no time to, to see it.
Yeah, it's, it's required that commissioners have, uh, have seen the, uh, property.
Um, we can look into options.
Which is not required of council members.
Just kind of a balancing act, because it's, it's like, you know, the, we have the required amount, but then you wanna make sure that, that, anything that needs attention, we don't already have a finalized agenda. So I don't know, like.
That's the.
So we're required to post the Friday before, by six, I believe?
Yeah.
Yeah, seventy-two hours.
Right.
Seventy-two hours before, in the past, has posting been done early, it's been a week?
Been a week, to give you time, because sometimes with two or three properties, you have to go see them. And so it's been at least a week. Um, and also, the commission chair has been a part of creating the agenda, I don't know if that's still the case, or not, and the commission chair has, has had a part of saying when it goes out to the commission members.
At least if you know it's going to be coming up, maybe informally.
Will we get a draft?
Let us know, a draft?
Yeah.
If you know there are properties to be reviewed, if we could get a draft, and then we'll verify it, you know, on the channel, of course.
You would like to have the agenda a week ahead of time, not necessarily the full meeting packet, but at least the properties that are gonna be.
The properties.
Yes, yes, if there are properties to visit.
Right, that's, that's the, the heart of the matter, right? 'Cause one, one challenge with, the earlier you kinda close things off, then the less flexible you are to accommodate things that come in later. And that's the, the balance, but yeah, we'll look into ways we maybe can, can help accommodate that. You're, you're expected to go out and take a look at these things, right, when you have to have the, the time to be able to.
It could just be a series of packets, it doesn't have to be all.
It's kinda tough to.
Sorry, trip's canceled, Ron.
I was already gone. Here you go, go look at them, all right, thank you. I was gone by five o'clock Friday, I was three quarters there.
Yeah, I was there. I rented it at the beach.
This time I was here, but I have been gone before, I know exactly what you're saying.
So because we talked about it last month, and we said we'd talk about it again, Armenian Town, so you were gonna.
Yeah, I.
Have an update?
I, I, my update is they haven't authorized me to give an update again, and I.
Who's they?
It's an uncomfortable position, the people who are working on it.
Who are those people?
Um, I, I mean, I don't have any specifics, obviously, folks in the mayor's office and my bosses in the city attorney's office. That's really all I've got. I don't really even know, unfortunately, but I probably couldn't say if I did.
Commission members, anything else, unscheduled items?
But I will mention that it's been.
We're still waiting.
We're asking, we still have to.
It's been way too long.
Coming up all year.
Staff, anything extra?
Over a year.
It's come to the city's attention that, uh, the Hotel Fresno is being nominated to the National Register, um, Historic Places. And we just received correspondence last week regarding it, and, um, they've asked for comments from city staff and commission, let's see, by, um, the next meeting, which is in about sixty days. They've given us a sixty-day review and comment period. Uh, the next, um, state historical, um, resources meeting will be on May seventeenth. And so they've requested that we submit comments fifteen days prior to that, if we have any regarding the nomination.
Will we be able to make comments at the next meeting?
Well, they give us enough time, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
Very good. Anything else, staff?
No, nothing from me.
Nothing?
Yeah.
General public, additional off, uh, comments?
George Hostetter, seven thirty, West San Ramon. Dan, i- if you please, on, if I understand correctly, uh, there are going to be nine possible historic districts that will be discussed at a future point by the commissioners. Can you name the nine again? I, you went through it so fast that I couldn't write it down.
Yeah, I'd be happy to.
Uh, for the.
South Van S Industrial District, um, the Yosemite Avenue District, the Hitching Post Thematic District, um, the mid-century modern, um, Blackstone area, mid-century modern, um, Shaw area, Chinatown, Terrace Gardens, um, St. John's. Um, and then the last one, we're not a hundred percent sure of the name, 'cause there's a pu- a couple of contenders, but it's a, uh, it's a potential warehouse district in the cultural arts district around Broadway and Amador. Uh, we're not sure which name gives us that one, but.
So, mid-century Blackstone, mid-century modernism Blackstone, or mid-century modernism Shaw aren't on the list?
Right.
They are.
That's on the list.
Oh, they are, oh, yeah.
Yeah.
No brains, no headaches, thank you.
I did read that, right? Yeah, I thought I said, okay, all right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I've never heard that one.
Public, anything else? Thank you very much, next meeting, April twenty-third, this meeting is adjourned, thank you.
All right.